Hey, welcome everyone. I'm happy to have everyone back. We were in executive session to discuss the employment history of a particular individual where no action was taken. So we're going to move right into our regular meeting at this time. And before we begin, I just want to mention an article that Haldane was aired in the Hudson Valley Magazine for this fall. And it really highlighted the high school. So thanks, Ms. Sniffin, for all your hard work. But I do want to say that it's a complete team effort here, K through 12. So even though it was high school, we do appreciate all the efforts that are put forth in all grades to make Haldane the special place that we are. Actually, there's a link to this article on the website as well, so please feel free to read it whenever you have a moment. It's a great article. I wanted to thank Dr. Benante for inviting the Board of Education this morning to the opening of his superintendent's conference day. It was phenomenal, fantastic. Looked like there was positive energy and can't wait to see the great things that are going to happen here at Haldane this year.
Yeah, appreciate that.
Lastly, the next meeting, our next Board of Ed meeting will be held September 18th at 7:00 PM. Hopefully, the weather will be cooler and we'll be in the band room.
I'm looking forward to cooler weather, so I think all of us are.
With that said, I'm going to turn over to Dr. Benante.
Thank you, Mrs. Hammond. And welcome to the members of the public who are here. As Ms. Hammond mentioned, we had a great opening this morning with staff. I want to thank those board members who were able to make it and those who were not. We hope to see you in the future. It's an open invite. As we meet with our staff each year, I think it's important to have members of our community present for that. And I'm certainly honored to have been a part of it. And yeah, I feel some good vibes, if you will, coming from that. And luckily, through the summer, I have plenty of material on Mr. Salem to use, so I look forward to using that in the future. What were you going to say?
That you also invited the Haldane Blue Notes, which they were spectacular.
Martha was great. I'll never get Martha's name wrong again. Called Martha Meredith. Yeah, I feel horrible, but she was sweet about it. But the Blue Notes performed, they were great. And yeah, we're looking forward to the start of the school year tomorrow, obviously. I met with the class of 2031 this afternoon. Our kindergartners, our incoming kindergartners were here. They were taking their bus ride and they met with our classroom teachers. They're adorable. They had their T-shirts and want to thank the Haldane School Foundation for providing ice cream and the T-shirts for the event. So the class of 2031 arrives here on campus tomorrow morning and we're all excited to greet them, along with the rest of our student body. I have a few discussion items this evening. The first, looking back, a board member had asked whether or not we continue to post contracts on the website over $100,000. There had been some process established in the past where that had been done. And looking back, that was a resolution that was passed by the board some years ago. So it's not a matter of board policy. It was a resolution for that particular year to post contracts valued at $100,000 or more on the district website. So if we were to continue, if the board was interested in continuing to do that, there's two mechanisms for doing so. We pass another resolution for this year and we post the contracts. Or we actually make that policy, if that's something that the board is interested in doing in perpetuity, and we keep that as a matter of policy and it'll always be there. That being said, once they're up there, we're not going, just on administrative level, we're likely not to go through a process for taking them down for the board to pass another resolution. I just think in the transition to different websites, some that were up there got lost. When the question was asked, well, where did they go? We looked back at the history a little bit and that seems to, and talked to council about what should the process be if this is something we want posted. So either we have another resolution stating what the resolution in the past said, or we just simply make it a banner of policy going forward, but that's for the board to decide.
So I remember this conversation, the question coming up about individuals' contracts. So for example, the superintendent's contracts, the principal's contracts. Is this reply, did this only apply to personnel contracts over $100,000? Or is the issue about any contract over 100, with like with a vendor, for example?
Sure. And I'm sorry, I don't have the old language from the resolution in front of me, but the way I interpreted it, and also what just was up there, was that it was personnel contracts and vendor contracts.
And vendor contracts.
Yeah, so some, I think one that came in the question was Monolith, the power purchase agreement we have with Monolith also being up there. So we would just need to define, or the administration would just need direction from the board on the scope of what contracts you'd like to see on there. Is it just personnel? Is it also vendors? If it is vendors, is it vendors, you know, any vendor that we're in agreement with? Or is it those only valued over a certain amount? But we'll make whatever happen. We just need to understand what the board desires at this point.
Okay. Yeah, and specifically for Monolith, it was on the website in addition to a link that showed how much savings we were earning. So I think it's just maybe some things that we have to look at in comparison to what was on the old's website that maybe didn't come over to the new.
So can we then think about this individually and have it on a future agenda to discuss?
So what would be, what would be the process? So if there's a, if there's a, do we, so I think it's a good idea, in the interest of transparency, especially above a certain dollar threshold, to understand what's the nature of the contracts that we're entering into. Personnel, interesting, but I think vendors is actually potentially even more interesting. Okay, suppose we come to the conclusion this is indeed a good idea. Do we propose, how's the process work? Being new, how's the process work?
So based on the discussion that the board has and defining the parameters of what you would like to see, I would need one meeting essentially to just prepare a resolution to have it on the next meeting's agenda. So if that conversation takes place at our next meeting, the 18th, somewhere around there, then two weeks later, and we define the parameters at the 18th, or the board does, then two weeks later, we'll have the resolution up for the board to act upon. And in the meantime, you know, we're trying to make sure everything that was on the previous website is transferred over. So I want you to understand, the administration isn't necessarily waiting. If there's kind of this understanding of what was done in the past, that labor contracts will be posted, certain individual contracts would be posted, that we're going ahead and putting those up. Because there seems to be an understanding or desire for that to continue.
Do you know why it was a resolution and not a policy?
I do not.
Could you tell from the context?
I do not, no.
But if we want it to be a policy, it's, then we go through the policy process.
Right, that would take longer.
It takes longer, it takes a few more meetings. But we get a first reading with a sample policy. We all look at it, we just say, oh, that works, that doesn't work, can we change this? We do a second reading, we say, okay, that looks good.
Maybe that's related to the fact that we're doing policy in general, right?
Yeah, and then we approve it, or we don't approve it, and...
And then there's also the process of who's putting these on the website. So, right, we know Megan is sort of the webmaster. However, Megan doesn't have access to every single contract initially. And Megan has another job. So we have to kind of think about the process overall of how we would get these on and sort of streamline and figure out who's really going to be in charge of...
I would assume that at some point, they're not going to change dramatically year over year for contracts over $100,000?
You'd still have to put the new ones up.
If there were new contracts that were signed, but some of them would, I assume, be multi-year.
I have two in mind, and it's the Monolith and the New Tech Network, which were both on the old's website. I'm not sure why it didn't...
Monolith is bad on...
Right.
I guess just one more question before sort of thinking about it and mulling it over. So you've talked about dollar threshold and you've talked about as criteria on which we should consider gating, dollar threshold and personnel versus vendor. Is there anything else that we should be considering, not knowing the scope of all the contracts that we'd have, that we would want to either consider for inclusion or exclusion?
I don't, I don't think so. And keep in mind, as smaller contracts come up, you're likely acting on them anyway. So they're a matter of public record. They may not be on the website, but they're certainly reflected in the minutes of the meeting. So nothing right now comes to mind, but I'll give it more thought as well.
And just to be very clear with the public, everything is spoileable.
Yes.
It may not be on the, on the website, but anybody can get any of this.
It's all publicly accessible, absolutely. The one thing, just for this year, as we're talking about resolution versus policy, so if this is a direction we want to go in sooner, I would say have, let's make the resolution. Resolution should then be revisited every year. So the policy does not necessarily need to be revisited each year. So it just eliminates an action item or something for the board to remember to act upon each year if we work towards having it in policy.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Yep.
So we'll all, or the board will think about it, recommend some parameters at our next meeting, so we'll keep it on as a discussion item, and then we'll look to have a resolution in the meeting following that.
And I think it would be helpful if we could, if you guys could send us a copy of the old resolution, just so we see it. And if we have sample policy too, just for us to start mulling over. Or just next agenda meeting, you know, it doesn't have to be done before then.
The second item is an update on leadership in the pupil personnel department. So obviously with Dr. Shoah's resignation, this is not the best time of the year to be conducting a search, or the summer was, the end of the summer was not the best time of the year to be conducting a search for leadership in the area of pupil personnel. So we had reached out to Dutch, I'm sorry, Putnam Northern Westchester BOCs. And luckily, Putnam Northern Westchester BOCs has individuals who they contract with as vendors to provide leadership in the area of pupil personnel services. So we have gone ahead and contracted for their services. And Dr. Selena Fisher and Ms. Bonnie Hart are two retired school leaders in the area of pupil personnel services. Dr. Fisher worked in Carmel for some time, as well as in Middletown for many years. And Ms. Hart also retired from Carmel in a leadership role there under the umbrella of special education. So we've contracted with both of those individuals to provide leadership in that particular department. What we foresee is the next two months while we conduct a search to find a permanent replacement. Given that it's a contracted service through BOCs, this would not be an action item for the board to act upon as normal personnel, regular personnel items would be, since we're, it'll become part of our BOCs service request. But I wanted to make sure the board had background information on what we were doing in the area of pupil personnel, so that did not come to you as a surprise. I did notify the staff last week, introducing Selena and Bonnie to them, and they'll be on site next week to meet with our staff. So we're looking forward to learning from Selena and Bonnie while they're with us and obviously transitioning to a long-term replacement for Dr. Shoah in the next few months.
Am I correct that the reason why there are two individuals is that as these, as part-time retired staff, there's only a certain number of hours that they can work? And so for us to have a level of services that we need, we need two people?
Yes, they're capped in the amount of time they can commit to us. And it's towards the end of the fiscal year, it's the beginning of the school year, but it's the end of the fiscal year for the state. So we have to be wary of how we're using them so as to best utilize them, really.
And the CIO piece that Dr. Shoah was also...
Ms. Sniffin is going to go back to her old position as CIO. So Julia stepped up and is helping us out in a big way there, because it's not an easy role to fill.
Did we, I know we spoke about this, but going to the RIC for that piece, is this something that we would want to look into?
I'm not fully up to speed on what the past conversations been with the district. I think you're always going to need someone internal who you identify as the chief information officer. There's just a various collection that needs to go on for reporting purposes, but the RIC certainly plays a role and can play a larger role in our information reporting to the state. We work with the RIC right now in many ways. So I would need to talk to Julia now and sit with our team to define, you know, whether, what's best held internally and what best do we contract with the regional information service or other entities on.
Sure. Just wanted to throw that out there.
Yep.
I know we've talked about it in the past, and I don't know where we really ever ended up, quite honestly.
Okay. Traffic flow. So I've taken some time over the summer to prize myself of what was being considered as part of the traffic flow pilot at the start of the school year. And I just didn't see it in the district's best interest to start the school year with a pilot, considering what was being proposed. And I wasn't comfortable that the pilot that was recommended or being considered at the end of last school year would not create another issue or issues in the surrounding area. So we don't want to establish procedures on campus under the umbrella of ensuring student safety and then create potentially unsafe situations in our surrounding roads. I met with Mayor Morandi, who was one of the first meetings I had when I came onboard, along with our, speaking with our administrative team and talking with some of our neighbors here in the community. And I felt that it was in the best interest to just hit the pause button, get a sense for how the traffic flows on campus during regular school hours. I haven't seen that yet. Obviously, I'll get a real good sense for it tomorrow. And then evaluate the situation, work with our other emergency responders. Deputy Shelters will be on campus, obviously, it was starting today. But I also want to speak with EMS staff and fire staff who are in the area to really get a good look at this before we make any proposals to proceed. So we notified our families. We also notified the neighbors. We were able to discern who received notice from the school last year in the surrounding area regarding a proposed traffic flow pilot, to let them know that for the time being, we're hitting the pause button and then we will reevaluate the situation as the, as the school year goes on. We very well may have an issue that needs to be addressed. And I certainly wouldn't want anything to be construed that we're not keeping the safety of students in mind. I am. But I just need, before I act or enact something, I need to see it for myself. I just think that's part of being responsible. So give me some time and we'll see where we're at after I observe cars circling our campus for a little while. And one thing that did stand out to me in speaking to staff is that we have procedures on, there was a feeling that we had procedures on campus that were not being followed. So it's difficult to enact changes when there was an acknowledgement that we weren't enacting or enforcing, excuse me, some of our own processes for, or enforcement for traffic-related issues on campus. So we had to address that first and then we'll, we'll talk about other steps to remediate the issue.
So are we still going to have Matt directing traffic at 90?
As of tomorrow, yes. However, that's something that we're looking to work with the town to address. And that's just a follow-up meeting that Matt and I and Mayor Morandi need to have. And Mayor Morandi, when I met with him earlier in the summer, indicated that he was willing to discuss that. But obviously, Matt's back on campus now, so we'll be able to have that conversation. Hopefully, we won't have Matt down on 90 for too much longer. We hope.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions on that? So with respect to Monolith, I've been encouraged by some conversations we've had with Mr. Fober, who's the CEO of Monolith over the summer months, bringing a resolution to the issues that we had with our solar panels on the main building some time ago. And I used to report that Monolith was on-site last week. I think it was the hottest day of the summer so far, and they were up there with their tent on the roof. They fixed all of the boxes that were of issue, replaced those boxes. Myself and a few members of our facilities team went up there and I won't say we inspected the work, but we, you know, talked to the team that was on-site. And the solar panels have been back up and running since Thursday of last week. So we're pleased for that. Yep, it's good news. I want to thank Mr. Fober for working with us over the course of the summer to bring a resolution to that matter. And I feel comfortable with the steps that Monolith has taken. One, just to replace the equipment that was of issue, but also to commit to independent evaluations of the system for the next three years was an important step to re-establishing some trust between the school system and their organization. And the team that was here was great, very helpful. And Mr. Fober's team will be back to work with our facilities crew as well, just to orient them to the system, just in case, because sometimes our team goes up on the roof, you know, the kids kick balls up there and whatnot, and to bring them down, just to make sure that they understand the system and how it works. And that way, we're not interfering with it in any way. But if we see if something, anything of concern to, you know, we'll be in a better position to notify them to address any concerns. But I don't anticipate that moving forward. So the system's up and running. And as you've mentioned, the website had the counter of some sort on it.
Right, is that all back up? I actually did check.
It's not back up yet, but we're going to go ahead and seek to put that back up on the website, so we can see how much energy is being saved as the system continues to operate.
And it was by building, it specified what was being generated.
Yeah.
It was a link. I just, it disappeared.
We'll try to get that up there again. And that's the biggest array on the building there. You know, I keep pointing to it. I'm not just pointing to the audience, I can see it through the window, for those watching at home. That's the biggest array. So our biggest savings will come from, from that array there.
It's actually been on tape. I just want to say that this is a huge success. It really is. We have been talking about Monolith Solar for years, plural. And it has been on our discussion items, like I think every week.
Well, hopefully, this is the last time it'll be on as a discussion.
And it has been up and down in our dealings with them, and it's been so disappointing that they haven't been running. And thank you for approaching the issue and coming to a resolution. And thank you to Monolith Solar for coming to a resolution. And I'm so happy that we're moving forward.
I'm happy too.
It's huge.
Yes.
It's good news.
It really is.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
That's it.
I think with that, I just, again, if I, if I didn't say it, I just want to express my, my warm wishes to all of our families for a successful start to the school year. We're really excited to have kids in the building. It's been odd being here for two months, but there's been no kids around. So I'm really excited for the start of school tomorrow, and I know our staff is as well.
As was clearly evident this morning. So thank you.
Good energy.
Okay, moving on. Any communication from the public at this time? No? All right. Okay, item E, information reports are here for us to review and we will approve at the next business meeting. Consent agenda minutes. May I have a motion?
Second.
Any discussion or comments? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Consent agenda financial. These are the reports that were previously provided for us for review. May I have a motion?
Motion, second.
Any discussion or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Consent agenda personnel. May I have a motion?
Motion, second.
Um, any discussion or...
I just asked Dr. Benante if he could talk about the, is that here?
I was looking for that.
Oh, yeah, no, number 14. Supplemental memo, MOA with the Board of Ed and the HFA regarding the arts coordinator position.
Yes.
The amount is different than what was on our budget.
Slides.
Slides, so...
Yep. I'll ask Ms. Dino to join in if I leave anything out. And so as we were looking back at the budget development process last year, there's really two things at play. One was the creation of an art club. The second was the creation of an arts coordinator position. The creation of an arts club, there's a process established for creating a club, recognized club, in this case at the high school. And that process had been followed in previous years. And we were in a position to recognize and create an art club with a stipend in position for the faculty advisor who would be leading that club. The arts coordinator position was going to provide leadership in the department to the music teachers, the art teachers, serve as a liaison, to the arts alliance, among other responsibilities. But it seems that the stipend, the agreed-upon stipend amount for the arts club became what was being referenced as the stipend for the arts coordinator position in the budget discussions that were occurring last school year. So as Jen had noted, the agreement that is attached for the arts coordinator position is for somewhere around $3,200. However, in budget discussions last school year, the amount was being referenced as $1,600, which is the amount that we pay a faculty advisor for a club. So somehow, those things became conflated in the budget process last school year. They are two separate things. So the budget process last year should have listed the amount that's listed here in the agreement of somewhere around $3,200. And the creation of the arts club and the associated stipend for the advisor for that club is a separate thing for $1,600. The good news is, we're in a position to support both. So by agreeing to this MOA, thank you, it doesn't put us in a spot where we can no longer support the club. We can do that. You'll actually see the club advisor recommendation likely come in the next meeting or two. But I wanted to make sure the board was aware. So one, it's just good we're being thorough here, so everything's on the up and up. But acting upon this doesn't put us in any precarious position budget-wise, nor does it, is it going to prohibit the arts club stipend when it comes to the board's attention? Is that...
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you. And I think originally, the slides were portrayed as an arts club.
Yeah.
It then morphed into one, we should probably just label it arts at some point, but...
Right, like arts enhancements.
Arts enhancements.
So we're getting both. We'll have a new arts club and we'll have, well, an arts club that's been happening, but we'll get actually a paid arts club advisor and an arts coordinator. Great.
Okay, any further discussion? Oh, Ms. Sniffin, did you want to? Oh. You're...
Just, are we, uh...
You need to do, do you need to?
Are we, are we...
Not yet. I didn't, I didn't, all in favor?
Okay.
I thought you were jumping. So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
This is the, in new business, the approval of the CSE, CPSE placement recommendations. And the recommended action is that the Board of Education approves the recommendations of the Committee on Special Education and Preschool Special Education as indicated below.
May I have a motion?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Moving on to district goals. For the public to understand, every year we adopt, the board adopts goals. And in the past, the way we've done it is that we kind of approve our own goals and the superintendent had their goals and we kind of piggybacked off of each other's goals. This year, we may be trying something a little different. What came out during our retreat was talking about combining board goals with superintendent goals. And we kind of itemized a few at our retreat, and we've all had the opportunity to take a look and see what we think. So now's the time to have that discussion. The first goal, do you want me to read these?
It's your call. I have copies here.
Should I?
Anyone needs a copy, should I?
Yes, thank you.
Good job.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So, goal number one, we said to establish and implement a structure for a continuous review of K through 12 program areas that, one, identifies relative strengths and weaknesses within the instructional program; two, reviews programs that are being considered for implementation within the school system; three, monitors internal and external resources, human, fiscal, et cetera, that may be of benefit to the school system; four, adapts to the changing needs of this curricular and instructional program; and five, clearly defines measure of student success. And keep in mind, we try to align our goals with our current strategic plan. So, this was definitely something.
I forgot which goal statement in the strategic plan this speaks to, but it's one of the 10.
And it seems like it's a big feat, a lot, sure.
So, if I may, just for the public's sake, we began last year to create a process for examining curriculum, K-12. We established some structures at the building level, and then at the district level, that were just being put in place. And we want to make sure we formalize those structures through this school year, and have a mechanism for evaluating major program areas that our kids experience in our school system, and have a clear sense of what's working, what's not, and how do we know? So, that's the gist of this goal here.
I am 100% in favor of this goal. It's been a long time.
It's written really clearly. I feel like, I know we kind of honed down and talked through some stuff. I think it sounds pretty good. One of the things I really like about this goal is it's, it's laying out, it's recognizing the work that the district started last year, which you really spoke to and was really important. But it really lays out the development of this continuous process, right? Like, really recognizing that this is an ongoing cyclical process. Can't necessarily do every single academic program at once. The alignment, the reference of a K-12 program area, really recognizing the importance of there being alignment across the different school levels. I think it's, I think it's, I think it's great.
Yeah.
It gets at something, the idea of defining measures of student success, something the board has, has been important to the board in the past few years, but we hadn't quite gotten to the place to begin to really think about and put those metrics in place, recognizing that there's lots of different types of measures. So, I think it's a, it's a great goal.
In goal, in just one thing for all of these, I guess my question to the board, to Dr. Benante, would be, at the end of the year, how would we know if we've been successful? How would we measure it or observe it and say, yes, we did it? And how successful were they? Is it either yes or no? Is it for this one, something's been established and implemented? What does implementation mean? Are people, have we run a program through the process? Because I know that there's, there's probably a lot of, as you mentioned Peggy, there are a lot of things that could be in this bucket for assessment. So, at the end.
So, that's been my question. And I even, Peggy and I have this conversation a lot. How do we measure? We know we're successful, right? We have the articles, and we have all the accolades, we're a blue ribbon school. How are we measuring success beyond that? And it's really important to do that. And it starts with the building levels evaluating curriculum in the process.
Actually, sorry to interrupt. I totally, totally agree with you on that. And in terms of success measurement for the district, I think there's some really interesting things that we could be doing there. But I was more specifically asking, like, for this goal, at the end of the year, how do we know whether we, as a board, with the administration and the staff, know that we have been successful in achieving, like, have we hit our goal?
Dr. Benante's gonna have a lot of work to do. And we're gonna evaluate him on that.
I like, I like things I can measure. I'm just like.
It's something that we talk about throughout. Like, we've, we've talked about keeping the strategic plan, something that's very present, something that we keep referencing. You know, the goals become that way as well. And I think that that is on all of us. It's our, it's our job to note as reports come from the administration. These are the, these are, we're talking about district goals, right?
Yep.
So, the principals are gonna have these goals, and the teachers are gonna have these goals. Like, we're all in this together. And I would hope that, you know, as the principals and administration are structuring their workshop items of discussion, maybe they're pointing towards these goals to let us know where they're at in different areas. And then we, in the past, have done like a six-month or halfway through the year check-in, kind of formally, you know, January, February, where we actually look at each goal and say, what are we doing? Let's talk about what's been done in this area, what hasn't been done in this area. And Dr. Benante will be a big part of that conversation. And then we can usually say, okay, we totally haven't been doing this part at all. Let's amp that up for the rest of the year. And then we evaluate it again at the end of the year, usually around the superintendent's evaluation, which tends to happen around May. So, there's been informal process, but there, there isn't an official benchmark.
Right.
Yeah.
So, sorry.
John, you mentioned was taking a program or an area and running it through this. You mentioned that in your, in your comments. And I think that's an important part to determining whether or not we know a process like this is successful.
Right.
Is applying it and looking at it and determining, did it have its desired impact or intent? So, I think that, that will help. But I think your question also is one that we need to sit with, with any improvement process. And it's kind of part of that continuous, cycle of continuous improvement, is always reevaluating, is what are, are we getting out of what our intentions are here in this area? I think, I think this will help, just based on previous experience. But I think your question is a good one. And we should always be asking ourselves, so how do we know if this is successful or not? What are, what indicators are we looking to, to define its success? Is it merely just the creation of the process, or is it the outcome of the process? Is it both? One, a quick aside, I think learning, we'll call it a mistake, in a previous setting, we had always defined and measured success in literacy by the percentage of the students who were reading at grade level or above. And upon reflection, we, we should have been asking, in addition to that, what student, or assessing what student disposition was towards reading. You could argue it was more important for students to be engaged and interested in what they were reading as a long-term indicator of their success than whether or not they were reading at grade level at that moment in time. Were they more passionate about reading? Maybe not yet reading at grade level, but really interested and engaged in what they were reading as one indicator, in addition to looking at whether or not they were reading at grade level. So, we weren't asking ourselves that initially, but we started to ask ourselves that towards the end. So, that's why I think it has to be continual. We always should be asking ourselves that question that you're asking right now.
Yeah. For me, I just think it's, maybe a couple of things. It's, we're gonna do, we're gonna launch an initiative to do a bunch of really interesting, good stuff. How do we know whether we've successfully launched that initiative, A? B, how do we know whether that's actually making a difference that we want it to make? Because it could have launched, like, we need transportation from here to dockside, and it's a horse. And that's probably not the best way to do it. And then C, is it actually driving the outcomes or change? I just want to be, make sure that we can check off on, we launched it successfully, it's in play. B, it is or it is not doing what we want it to do. And then C, from an assessment process, and then C, it's actually delivering on student metrics, which is probably much longer, much, much longer.
So, one example of, that's coming to mind, and Ms. Sniffin could probably help me out here, is the shift in the math thinking in the high school, right? So, that was year one. Last year was year one of this change, where students in Algebra II did not follow the Common Core structure, per se. But the thought was that it would benefit them in the long run, specifically SAT prep. So, we had Ms. Sniffin and the department chair, Mr. Sisano, come and explain this whole process. And Ms. Proparo, the teacher, how do we know we're successful? How do we know that was a good thing to do, right? So, in your first year, you tried it out. When those kids go take the SAT, they should have more knowledge, stronger knowledge to help them because they concentrated in that area. So, these are measures that aren't going to be specific, but we're hoping that there's benefit and that it will show in those results. Am I, right?
Well, I guess, I mean.
That's one, just an example that I thought about as you're sitting here saying, well, how are we gonna measure that? And really, the focus has to be what's best for the kids. And maybe there's not a solid, hard number, but if we think that the benefit outweighs anything else, I think we're moving in the right direction. That's.
Well, I'm actually kind of on the John side about this, because I think, I mean, what, I mean, when we talked about this goal to begin with, I felt like it was very ambitious and very big and, and hard probably to accomplish in a year. And so, I guess what I would want to see, I'm a little less confident, I guess, than Laura and Jen, that we're like, that we've got this figured out, like, how to find out whether or not we've achieved this goal. I guess I would turn to Dr. Benante and say, like, are there one or two workshop meetings that we, where you could dedicate some time to lay out for us really clearly what the steps are that have been in place? And again, knowing that it's not our job to be in the weeds, but because this is also our goal, for you then to really maybe lay out for us in a little bit more detail what this process, what this process looks like, and maybe how it's being carried out with a particular program area. Because I, I'll be honest with you, I actually don't know how, at the end of the year, I would be able to determine whether or not we had been, like, I feel like I still have more thinking to do. Okay, so as a board, how, what's my marker of success gonna be, that I've supported the accomplishment of this goal? But also, I think for me to be able to think about how to determine the extent to which the board has been successful about doing this, understanding more about Dr. Benante's and the, and the administration's and the teachers' process for accomplishing this goal. So, I don't know if that made any sense.
It makes sense to me. I think that's how we should be using our workshop time. But that's, you know, that's something we can continue to discuss. And, and I think it's also connected to when a building principal's providing a report on what's going on in their particular building, there should be a connection between what we're establishing as our district goals. Any process I'm defining or leading is happening in collaboration with our building administrators, and likely should be having an impact on what we're seeing going on in our classrooms, or a connection to it. So, but it's not all going to be done in one year. We have many programs that we have in place, but I think these are the right questions to ask, so we can work towards a sense of understanding, shared understanding among each other and among our community members or within our community, to know whether or not we're meeting our charge as, as a governance body or as an administration for providing direction for our kids and their education here. So, I think everything, I'm in agreement with what you said. It might be a little messy, but I'm, I'm okay with that.
And I guess, and I, and I hope my, my tone of my question wasn't too negative, of like, being dubious. It was more like.
This is exactly what we asked Dr. Bowers to do, though. We said, hey, we have this strategic plan out there. Give us examples of what's been going on. And she outlined them. So, we may not necessarily be looking at hardcore data figured numbers, but.
Except I think we actually need to get to the hardcore data numbers, at least in some places.
And, and I think that, I'm just gonna pull it back and say, my expectation, let me say, I think there's significant upside for consistent delivery of programs across K through 12. I think that, there's, people have said that there's disparity in terms of how we teach any level of things. And that's great, right? If we can get a process that establishes how we look at, monitor, update, all, fantastic. I expect measurable student results to actually, from that process, to bear out in the future. There is no short, if we establish a process to reassess how we think about math education this year across K through 12, the benefits are gonna be when the kindergartners get out of 12th grade in 12 years. So, I'm not looking to short-term student output. I'm really specifically looking at, does this process facilitate the conversation we need to have to, to take advantage of the upside of being able to understand what our programs are doing consistently across campus? And that's the, we'll get to data years from now, but I wanted, like, we got a good process in place. Good.
And when I say numbers, I just mean an operate, like, an operational definition about what we're, about what we're looking for. I mean, one of the reasons why I think this goal is really important is, you were starting, I felt like we were starting to hear, like, in PTA meetings is a good example, real questions from, from parents about, about what we were, what we were accomplishing with the changes that we were making. And one of the things I really like about this goal is I feel like it really acknowledges that, that we want to continue to think about what we're doing, but also communicate to the public about what, what we're accomplishing in the district. And, and I think that's important, because I think there, I think there are a lot of, I think there are a lot of questions. I think you're right, there have been examples. But I think that the questions linger, and it's a, without spending all of our time doing that, it's, it's a reasonable undertaking for us to have, to make sure that, that, that that's being made apparent to parents. Yeah. And also, though, to also remind ourselves that everything isn't going to be able to be measured with a number.
Right.
There's a lot of really important educational benefits and social, emotional benefits that are happening in our classrooms every day, that are not going to be measured by a number. So, we have to be careful about data-driven, you know, goals, that, you know, could data just be, you know, a kid's statement about how much they liked that book that they couldn't really read, because they're not a good enough reader, but they really liked the pictures? I mean, is that data, you know? And so, I think we also have to just be open-minded about what we are thinking about as data.
There are some things that, for sure, are measurable with data, but there's much benefit to not always looking at data. So.
John, I just want to make sure I understand a question you were asking earlier before we move on to the next goal. And if I understood you correctly, you're really asking, how do we evaluate the process itself?
How do, like, for, we're establishing a goal for the year. At the end of the year, how do we know that we've delivered on that goal?
Right, right.
Not.
Seeing the goal as, as describing a process.
Let me break it down in the most, if I'm reviewing you, if this is your, if I've got an employee who's like, got three things they need to do in the year, I'm like, how am I gonna assess whether they did what they said they were gonna do?
Okay. I understand that. That was clear.
Well, I, I hate subjectivity, especially along those lines, right?
Yeah, I'd want to be clear on what you're evaluating, you know?
And I think a good start would be to take a look at the strategic plan and what we asked Dr. Bowers to do. And I think she presented it in March. She reached out to her leaders in each building and said, hey, help me identify where we were, where we came, what we've done along the way. And that's a tool of measure. So, if we're comfortable with this one, we can move on to item number two.
Yep.
Goal two. Finalize the planning for a proposed bond referendum and facilitate a process. Finalize the planning for a proposed bond referendum and facilitate a process which elicits trust and support for proposed modifications and improvements to the school district facility. An evaluation of the safety and security protocols currently in place in the school system will be included as part of the process. And as necessary and/or appropriate, a plan for improving the safety and security of the school district will be implemented. And I think I joked, I was the one at the retreat that said, hey, could we get a director of facilities first?
Still a good idea.
Still a good idea, right? But all jokes aside, we do recognize that initially, the bond referendum that we spoke about last year included this massive pipe restructure, which thankfully, we got great news at our last board meeting, for those of you who didn't hear, that the pipe restructure does not need to happen, so we're in good shape with that aspect. However, if you all remember, there was that long laundry list of items that was prepared by our former facilities director. And, and there's still a lot to accomplish and we, at some point, will need to reevaluate that along with, I know, I believe at the next meeting, we're going to have a presentation on certain aspects of the safety.
So last year, at some point, the board had authorized, or the administration executed a safety and security audit. We contracted with Putnam North and Westchester Bowses to do that. So we received a copy of that audit and the regional safety coordinator will be available to discuss the findings from that audit in executive session because it's a matter of safety and security prior to our, our next board meeting. So at the retreat, I believe these were two separate items. And now, you know, they're interrelated. So they've been combined as goal two here. The bond referendum work, work related to safety and security that had been started or starting last year, combining those into one goal because they likely overlap.
I'm comfortable with this goal. And I definitely think it's something that we can measure and evaluate. Are you good?
I'm good.
Okay.
I just, Dr. Benante said something in our referendum that I actually found very helpful, that when we were talking about these, you said, well, sometimes it's really good for like a new pair of eyes to come in as well, right? So for a couple of years, right, the Buildings and Grounds Committee has been working really diligently to put this list in place. But here also, I think with you here is an opportunity for somebody to come in from a district that, you know, really different from ours, but, but also, you know, somewhat, I guess what I want to say, to come in and really look at the, our structures, the, the, the physical plant and, and, and help us understand like where, you know, where, where do we need to make improvements? Like, again, for the, for the, for the well-being of, of our kids. Yeah. And so I, I really, I really appreciated that, that you, you would bring that perspective.
I certainly would want to be doing so in collaboration with the director of facilities and, and define leadership in that department and also with our, our active committees that have focused on this work. But some things do stand out and I, I think it's a good opportunity when you're, it's clear to me that the, whether it be through our committee structure or as a community, we've spent some serious time thinking about what needs to be done for our schools. And that's time well-spent. I, I just think it all can't be done at once and we know that, but that there is work to be done and we don't want to lose the opportunity to complete work that could be done in a timely manner while we continue to think about other projects that we may want to do down the road. And then the safety and security piece is something I just personally have spent a lot of time or professionally spent a lot of time on over the last five years, as many school administrators do. So I have a perspective, I think, to lend, when it, or to share when it comes to that discussion as well. That's where we're at.
Okay. Goal number three. Develop and articulate clear systems for communication between the administration, school employees, students, parents, and community members that are proactive and predicated on trusting positive relationships. I feel like communication is, has been one of our goals for the last couple of years. We've tried different aspects of it. I think this is definitely something that we need to continue to work on.
Just a comment. So Mr. McCarthy, who led part of our retreat, shared some ideas with respect to communication protocol with our, with our board that other districts are utilizing. So that's an option there is to develop processes that are more clearly defined for our community members on, on Hooter contact, if you have a question or a concern about the program. So that's maybe an outcome that could come from this. But I think in addition to that, when we're engaging in a budget construction process, that there should be an articulated process for our engaging the community in a dialogue around what's important to honor through the budget process. So when I, as an administration, making a recommendation to the board in terms of budget construction, you know, part of it, it's my recommendation, but it should be based on a thorough dialogue with internal stakeholders, but also community members at large. So that's another system that can be put into place. And then just throughout the school year, making sure that we have clear systems in place for communicating. You know, I heard from, I think one of our board members or community members that when we send messages home via our messaging system, the attachments can be hard to access on your phone, depending on what type of phone you're using. That's good feedback. So we should be examining all of that and making sure, sure that we, one, have mechanisms in place for communicating for a variety of reasons. And as various work needs to be done throughout the year and that those mechanisms are effective, they reach our desired audience and, and it's truly two-way. It's not just all getting out, that we're also getting information in to know how our work resonates with our community.
Great.
And I think this, it really acknowledges that it's a system, right? I think in the past, our goal was like, the board is going to communicate better with the community, like, there was something, there was clearly something wasn't working, right? And it wasn't until the summer that I realized, oh, you know, that, that it actually wasn't. I mean, yes, definitely, maybe the board needed to communicate better or needed to listen differently, but, 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 but what I like about this is that it really acknowledges the system of people that make up the school community and the need for there to be these processes in place and for everyone to, to understand them and be committed to the process, you know, and it being positive and trusting, you know? I think, I really like the way it's framed. I think we've really struggled with this. And I feel like it frames the issue much more coherently than I certainly was able to frame it in the past.
And that it puts a, it's, there's a responsibility on all of us.
Yes, exactly.
For clear communication. Yeah, that there's a, a system in place so that it's our job as board members to help direct community members or parents or whomever who have questions to the right avenues. But it's also the responsibility of the community members to seek out the right avenues, right? And for all of us to just be empowered to have the most effective ways to get what we need.
It was interesting to see Mr. McCarthy's, Mr. McCarthy from Putnam North and Westchester Bowses helped facilitate part of our retreat that we had with the board, specifically on communication. And with that, he was able to share some of what other districts are doing in terms of communication. And it was really helpful to see that it really does need to be a system and it doesn't fall just on a group or a certain individual. And there has to be two.
Can I make one?
Yeah, please.
Let's talk to, let's talk to. The board is actually not mentioned. I'm sorry.
So we should include.
The board is actually not mentioned?
That we should be part of this? And can we add community leaders and members? And Dr. Benante, just to give you a little bit, I think I understand where Margaret's coming from in terms of community leaders. At one point last, well, several different meetings last year, we invited community leaders in to have discussions with us and just kind of build that bridge between their organizations and Haldane's. So I, I see where Margaret's coming from on that. And this is probably something that we never really mentioned to you. And it may be of interest to pick up some of those meetings.
We've been meeting with a lot of them over the summer.
Individually.
I don't know, I want to make sure I didn't miss any of them. So we'll talk about who they are and what the process was last year and make sure we honor that moving forward.
I just think we need to acknowledge that the board needs to be part of this and the community leaders need to be part of this.
Absolutely.
No, go ahead.
I'm assuming, I'm, I'm going to say, I'm assuming that we have this here because there is a, a sense that people in the community don't get the, either can't access the information that they want or don't understand what's going on or don't have a set process by which to receive all the information that they need or want or feel that they should have. Is that fair?
And sometimes have the wrong information.
Or sometimes have the wrong information.
What we tried at one point was various apps and blogs and we found that it wasn't even getting hits.
Right.
So that really wasn't effective.
Yeah, yeah. So there, a variety of tactics that you could deploy on newsletters or blogs or public announcements or whatever the heck it is. And goal being that there is a, we raise the knowledge-based satisfaction awareness, whatever, of the general community above where it is now, right? So the, back to how are we going to measure whether this is successful? It's good to put, if a tree falls in the forest and nobody hears it, did the tree really, like, so if we put structures into place, at the end of the year, I would expect a year-over-year increase in people like, I know where to go, I know what's going on in the school, I feel regularly communicated to and I'm aware of all the, and I don't have to come to a board meeting or watch a video in order to understand. Is that like the successful outcome that we're shooting for?
Yeah.
Okay. Could we put in something that says, in, in order to facilitate a greater knowledge, transparency, understanding, something along the?
You want an outcome statement?
I want an outcome statement. See the play.
There's not going to be a great way to actually give you a number on that, though.
I don't, wait a minute, no, I just.
I mean, we've talked about.
If I had to do it, I'd do a pre-post survey, but we're not going to go there.
The playground.
We've talked about monkey.
Surveys don't work. Surveys are only like a small percentage of our population.
That's a good idea.
So the survey idea feels like it makes a lot of sense to do a before and after survey. It would never work because people don't do the survey. You're not going to actually get a.
Yeah, no, I know, I know. That's not the right way to do it.
Here's the, what you're going to measure.
You're going to measure it from how few complaints you get.
Exactly what I was going to say.
The inclusion of an outcome statement, even if we're not going to, and I don't think we should, and I'm going to be clear, I don't think we should have a survey date or anything like that, but it's important to know the problem we're trying to solve, which is that we feel like the community in general feels like they don't have the information they need or want and knows how to get it.
So one, oh, sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off. One thing that came immediately to our minds was that when Peggy and Margaret's children graduated from here, they weren't getting the same.
They didn't get emails.
Emails that Jen or I or Evan were getting. And it was like, they had no idea what was going on. And that was one way, we were like, oh, my gosh, we're not even hitting. The school board. So it's just things like that that came to our attention. And, yeah.
I don't, I don't think this has to be part of the goal, but I, I know that I'm cognizant as, as, in terms of my own role of working on this goal, is also to continue to develop my own understanding about what, as a board member, what's it appropriate for me to know? What level of information isn't appropriate for me to know? But I also think this is a community in which helping people also understand and, and be clear about what information is to be shared with the public and what information isn't to be shared with the public, you know? What, what level, not that everybody's always satisfied with the amount of information that is made available to them, but really to, for all of us to continue to develop our understanding about, not everybody is going to know everything. It's not appropriate for everybody to know everything. And I think that is something, maybe not successfully, but I think we have tried to communicate and I know that I can, want to continue to try and.
And to delineate those roles, right? And I think our neighboring district, one of our, to the north, had a great layout that Mr. McCarthy presented to us and kind of gave different scenarios of, okay, if you have this sort of question, who's the first in command you should go to, then the next? And the Board of Ed was really rarely on that.
Right, should not be the first.
You know, something that we need to keep in mind.
That's why I, I feel process is important here. Transparency is really important and ultimately just to get to a place of trust between the community at large, whoever that may be, the administration, our faculty, board members, you know, all those who are, you know, more direct relationship with the school. I think that helps. If those trusting relationships and there isn't a sense of transparency and process in place, then I, you could have the best laid out chart or schematic for contacting who, and it, it just may not work. So that's why it, it's not just one process, it's a system of, of processes. And we'll have to, you know, work with this. This very much, as several of the goals are, it, it's going to be an evolution.
One concern I have about these goals is that it does not include, so I, I really like the idea of the board and the district all having common goals because I think it's our job to support the district and we all should be working together. So this makes a lot of sense to me. However, I feel like the board has established a goal of dealing with policy this year and that is nowhere on here. So it could just be, you know, I was like, oh, maybe I could put that in goal three, you know, articulating clear communications with the public. Policy is, is a big part of that, but that's not really what goal three is about. So maybe it doesn't need to be on the district goals, but I just feel like we, as a board, need to just keep saying that that is one of our personal goals for the year, you know, and just keep it as a priority.
So I, onto, when we move on to the next, to discuss our district committees.
Yeah.
I actually added a few. One of those being policy.
Well, that might do it, if it becomes like a committee, just to keep it in our forefront.
Yeah, I think that's a really good point, Jen. And I, again, reflecting on what John had shared about making sure we're not combining the two, that the board very well will have goals and they, they should. But not letting some of those board goals that are very specific to board operations come into the district goals because then, before you know it, you end up with, you know, eight goals and really only a set of them are, are directing district operations and a, and a set are really only pertain to board operations. So I know the policy work's important.
Sure.
And really, if you look back at our goals from last year, two of these, goals two and three were basically goals that we had in a different form as a board goal. So it happens, right?
Just like we were talking about with goal number one, it's, it's not a one-year deal. It's an ongoing.
So what I'm getting at is I'm comfortable with this and we can give it a try. And if we feel like we need to revert back to our old practices?
And there was some good feedback provided tonight. So what I'd like to do is just to take that feedback, do one more, ideally only one more revision of these and then have them on the next agenda for adoption for the year.
Sure.
That would put us in a good position to begin to facilitate the work or lean into the work. And, but there were some things that came up that I want to, whether it be just wordsmithing or maybe re-adding or redefining a certain part or two. or maybe re-adding or redefining a certain part or two based on our discussion. So that's what I, how I think we should proceed.
Great.
Good.
Sounds good.
Version 3.0 will be our next.
Okay.
Two point one.
Two point one. There you go.
Okay. Moving on to the discussion regarding the district committees. We had an opportunity to review them all and where we all sat last year. I had three more that we may or may not need to, but let me just throw them out there. One being policy, one LMC, labor management, and we do have negotiations is, we do have a contract coming up this year, which is CSEA. So I think it would probably be in our best interests to just try and identify board members.
Well, the LMC is, we have to do that one. That's a contractual.
What's LMC?
Labor management.
And what was the third one?
Negotiations.
Oh, okay, all right, separate.
And labor management and negotiations are separate?
They were two separate.
In the past?
Right. I mean, I think you and I served on both of those.
Yes, but they were separate.
Yeah. So.
Yeah, I definitely agree that we need a policy committee.
Heck, yeah.
Doesn't get better than a policy committee.
I'd like to be on that policy committee.
Yeah, I want to be on the policy committee, too.
Okay. Winner, winner. Jen and Peggy.
Well, I mean, I read, I mean, we all read them, but I really, yeah. Keep it going. Keep it going as well with the other committees.
Audit, we already identified Margaret and Peggy.
I think it makes sense for me to be the liaison to the technology committee, given my expertise. I just, I just need to make sure I can, I can attend those meetings on a regular basis. And I think it just means, I missed a lot of them last year, but I will do a better job.
I think they got very much.
Well, but I think there was a schedule, I think the schedule maybe tipped around a little bit.
There was a lot of snow.
A lot of snow. But, but, but I do, I do think it makes sense for me to be on that, on that committee.
That sounds good.
And I'll take the conduct again.
All I was going to say, I.
Margaret, are you sure? Hundred percent. I won't get there.
I was going to offer up buildings and grounds to anybody that is willing to take it.
I'd be really interested in doing it. Give me a sense of, let's have a conversation about when they meet and all that sorts of stuff.
That's usually the problem.
It's the problem with.
It's the problem with basically all of these, unfortunately. They meet right after school, usually 3:30.
So the way that the board committees work, that we are their, we are the liaisons to these committees. It's nice if you can attend the meetings.
Yeah.
But that's not, you know, it's not a requirement. These, a lot of these meetings happen at 3:00, 3:30. A lot of people have jobs. It's like, it's not something that we can always get to.
Yeah.
But what we've done in the past is that if you're the liaison to a committee, you make a connection with the chair and you just let them know that you're the board liaison, you're there to help. If they have a meeting that you, they really want you at for a certain reason, maybe during budget time or something, that you try to be there and, but it's not required that you're at every meeting because it's just, honestly, it's just not possible.
But I think the issue with buildings and grounds, I say this as a person not volunteering for it, is that it actually, one would have to really dedicate oneself to really getting up to speed on the vast amount of work, on the work that that committee's done, understanding the lists. Like, I guess I can imagine that a person wouldn't necessarily need to be at all the meetings, but there would, because it's such a big issue, there would have to be a plan in place to stay.
As up-to-date as possible.
To, to get up-to-date and to stay up-to-date. And I don't know what that would be.
Do you live in the city?
No.
No?
White Plains.
White Plains, you're like me. I'm in Bronxville. Getting here.
So, and I guess, I mean, speaking as a person, I, my first year on the board, I worked in the city, right? So I understand, I mean, and even now, I mean, I'm a remote employee, I'm at home. But I, I guess it's within the realm of possibility for a person on the board who has a full-time job to at times know, I'm going to have to take PTO to go to a meeting. I'm going to have to negotiate working from home once, I mean, if it's at all possible. I'm going to have to negotiate working from home once a month, and then I'm going to have to block off my calendar for three hours on a Monday. I mean, it's, and, and so I guess the thing, if that's a feasible thing for you to do would be to think, where, where is the place where I would want to do that? But it's a sacrifice. I mean, there's no doubt about it.
Oh, yeah, no, I know. I knew that coming in.
I'm willing, John, if you want to be a co-attend.
I would love to participate. Also, tell me a bit about the content and on LMC and negotiations.
So the negotiations is tricky because that's, requires even more time, specifically, basically when the attorneys commit, when the labor union commit, when that rep.
And that's not always right after school. Sometimes that's like a 5:00.
Sometimes it happened at 10:00 AM.
Yeah, that was.
All over.
All over. I'd be willing to do that again, just because I've done it before and either, and both Laura and I have done it before. So sometimes it's nice to have, just have the history of, and have gone through it. At least one of us maybe should do it.
I was.
Did you want to do it?
I was willing to do it. It's, that's one that you have to be kind of flexible for. It's what, if you're good with it, Jen, or?
Did you, were you wanting to do it? Is that why you were?
The flexibility is going to be harder.
Yeah.
It'd be interest, it'd be, I'd be really interested in the content, but the flexibility's going to be hard. And LMC?
That's really.
That's hopefully a meeting that you'll never have to go to. That's a labor management committee where there's usually like a dispute with one of the unions. The unions, there's a dispute and you have to go and be the board representation for it. We are, I'm happy to say, we have not had many of those meetings, but when you have them, they're long and they take a while. But it's, it's, it's not a frequent, like, monthly meeting, hopefully.
You know, and I said technology committee, but I'm actually really very flexible. I could, I could serve, I'd be happy to serve as the liaison to the safety committee again. Technology committee might be, could be a good one for John. I mean, in terms of one that you could follow without necessarily having to be there all the time. Yeah.
I was hoping to switch things up myself. I'm willing to take safety if.
I could take labor management if that's going to be this kind of random one-off. I could probably do random one-offs.
I think that'll be a little random one-off.
I could probably do that.
Sign me up for buildings and grounds, please.
And like I said.
I retract that. Immediately, no, I'm sorry.
And.
Yeah, that's fine.
We'll work together, you know?
I think the LMC has to have two people on it.
I think it's an important.
I agree.
Thing that I don't know another about.
No, it's contractual.
It's contractual.
The labor management has to have two of us on.
I can be the second. That's fine. Especially if it's a sporadic one-off.
Are you a good at buildings and grounds as well?
Um, yes, we'll work it out together amongst us, just.
Just in my past experience with an LMC, it's not unusual to meet later because it would be dictated by board member availability, so.
And lawyers.
Yeah. But if it's contractual, we wouldn't, we wouldn't be able to meet until you, you would be available.
Yeah.
So it's probably a little more conducive to your schedule, if that's a concern.
So I am on, so we have audit, Peggy and Margaret, buildings and grounds, myself and John, code of conduct, Margaret, PTA.
PTA is not really a committee. I just want to say that out loud.
It's not a committee.
It is, it is, it is not a board committee. It is a private organization, but we have always felt that it's really important for the board to stay as connected to it as possible. I'm happy to do that again.
But I thought we took all of those off last year. I thought we took that off.
We did.
And the school foundation.
We did, but we didn't really. We said it out loud, that we recognized that it's not a board committee, but I still stayed the liaison to the PTA and went to as many meetings as I could.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I don't, we can, we can take it off as like an official assignment, and that might be appropriate to actually like take off the list, but I think we should all know that going to PTA meetings is actually really valuable. So when any of us can go, we should go. And I've also, in the past, reached out to the PTA president and said, if you ever want a board presentation, budget time, it comes up, you know, they just want a board member to just give a little report in a way about what's going on.
And this year, we did it a little different, where we brought in different groups and talked in the cafeteria, so with a lot of the PTA members and.
So maybe we can take it off the official list.
I wouldn't want any of the other organizations that we took off to feel disrespected.
Yep. But I think we should all just know that that is an important group to stay connected to because you really get to dialogue directly with parents.
Safety committee, that's myself. Technology, Peggy, you have quite a bit there. I can take technology.
What do I have? I have the audit committee and policy.
Policy.
It's going to be like a significant commitment.
I know. You want to take technology? That's fine. I mean, that's fine. Yeah.
Okay. John, I'm really going to rely on you on buildings and grounds. Just kidding. Wellness committee. You know, we split these two. Did it used to be health and safety? Was it always just safety?
There's separate.
I think it always came across as health and safety, but they're two separate.
They're separate committees.
I can stay on wellness.
Okay.
Good?
Good.
So I just have one question for the resolution. Do you want me to not say the PTA part and just read everything else?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. So are we ready?
I think so. What have we, what did we all commit to?
Do you want me to read the list back?
No, just kidding.
Okay. I'm going to read it in the resolution, so.
Okay.
Okay. Recommended action is that the, let's see, be it resolved that the Board of Education designates its representatives to the following district committee for 2018, 2019. Buildings and grounds, John Hedlin and Laura Hammond. Code of Conduct, Margaret Parr. Safety, Laura Hammond. Technology, Laura Hammond. Wellness, Margaret Parr. Policy, Jen Daly and Peggy Clements. Labor Management, Margaret Parr and John Hedlin. And Contract Negotiations, Jen Daly.
And Laura.
And Laura. Thank you. Good?
May I have a motion?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Any communication from the public at this time?
Yes.
Absolutely. Go ahead. Damian, thank you.
Hi, Damian McDonald. So a couple of things. One is, I really love hearing about the goal setting, and I think it's, it's fantastic. Just reminder, you know, we taught you, everybody spoke about measurement and everything else, and so you're probably familiar with the mnemonic acronym SMART, right? Specific, measurable, achievable, relevant and time-bound. So don't boil the ocean, but awesome. Committees. It would be great if we could, as liaison, you all, could make sure that we have charters for each of the committees. And I think that that would be a great way to show alignment, right? So for example, buildings and ground, very relevant for safety and the district-wide goals. So I think you can get alignment and drive that, or else you're not going to have a concerted effort towards that, so.
That's a worship. Not there.
And just one other item, just buzz. Awesome job, and I think it was Megan Shields that did it with the electronic forms and everything. Everybody, I just kept on hearing that buzz, how fantastic it was and not having to scribble things in and send it back. So that, awesome job.
Thank you.
That's it.
That was a new way of communicating. That worked and was positive, so, yes.
And we, and we know that all of our families have adequate internet access and the forms are translated in English and relevant topics, or if we have families that aren't native English speakers, we have a plan to reach out to those families to make sure they know how to access them. Sorry.
I don't know the answer to that question. Do you?
I believe we've accounted for families that have a defined need based on our knowledge of which ones they are. We shouldn't take that for granted and know that we know all of those families, but it's, again, it's the question we always have to be asking ourselves.
I guess if you don't get the forms back from them.
If you don't get the form back, we reach out with hard copy.
You know that there's an issue.
Okay.
I mean, I'm all for that kind of efficiency, but I also sort of, being somebody who thinks about ed tech a lot, we make these assumptions that this access is universal and access is fundamentally not universal. Not that I need to lecture anybody on that.
Good point. Sorry.
Thank you. Okay. If there's no additional communication from the public, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.